Yeah.
Level it more or less?
Yeah.
It'll go down, lay down. This is a better thing coming.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. The first order of business this evening is the agenda on minutes. See what action the board wishes to take regarding approval of minutes from the meeting held on October 20th, 2025. Do I have a motion? The board is going to be discussing that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes from the meeting held on October 20th, 2025? Thank you. See you next. Next, we will move on to citizen comments.
Hello, my name is Amy Swasey and I'm a resident of Andover.
Hello, my name is Chloe DeWicky. I'm a resident of Albany.
The eighth graders took a fun trip to Camp Kiev in Novobor Amay in early November. We are here today to talk about the leadership school at Kiev and some of the fun things we did there. Before we went to Camp Kiev, we had four camp counselors come through the school twice in October. They gave us the layout of what we were going to do at Kiev and the grand activities, team bonding with our rap groups. They gave us different challenges to complete, then we debriefed the activities, we talked about what went well, what didn't go well, and what could go better.
Before we left, the teachers gave us a packing list and a schedule of what to expect. One thing that was hard for us was that we weren't allowed to use our phones when we left there. The day we left for Kiev, we got off the bus at 8:00 a.m. and had a two-hour bus ride to Kiev. We were at Kiev for two nights and three days. To start our day, each morning at 7:50, all the cabin groups would join around the flag as one of the counselors raised it. After that, we would go to breakfast. Then after breakfast, the whole school would join around the basketball court and do mini games before separating into our wraps.
When we got into our rap groups, we would do activities throughout the day like tennis, pickleball, and rock climbing. We got to do challenges on the high ropes course. At the ropes course, there were a number of obstacles you'd do, such as walking across a log, walking across loaded platforms, and climbing a tall net. One of the things that everyone enjoyed doing was learning how to rock climb. The counselors taught us how to use harnesses and how to belay. That means we were in charge of the other people's safety.
In the evening, we got to choose... In the evening, we got a choice on the next activity we did for an hour. Some of the options included gagabah, indoor or outdoor rock climbing, piquet show, nature walks, or writing poems or raps. Before going to our cabins for the night, we would do activities with our cabin groups. We'd do things like musical chairs, poison dart frog, and other games. Then we would end the night in our cabins. The cabins were nice, they were heated, and they had their own bathrooms. Each cabin had a rammed tentage and a counselor that stayed with us.
The points of going to Camp Kiev were learning leadership skills, getting out of our comfort zone, team bonding, and spending time off our fives. For me, it was difficult leaving my parents for three days because I didn't have my son and I wasn't able to call them. But I ended up just saying the no cellphone policy and I was excited to see my parents after. Overall, I had a very fun time hanging out with my rap class and my cabin group and learning stuff from my counselor. Even though I missed my parents, I enjoyed the trip.
And for me, I'm very afraid of heights, so it was very hard for me to rock climb and not be able to touch the ground. I like...I like when I have somewhere to put my feet and to touch the ground. So when I...so when they had us do rock climbing and rope swings, it was very uncomfortable. I had to trust my classmates to keep me safe. Even though I was scared, I really enjoyed it. I was faced with obstacles, but I'm really glad I got it done and accomplished them.
The eighth grade class had a wonderful time at Camp Kiev, and we are thankful that we have the opportunity to go on this worthwhile adventure. It was a great team building experience and it was fun to be unplugged for a couple of days. And if you look over at the TV, we have some pictures. So this was us meeting after breakfast to go to our wraps. That was one of the team building activities we did with our rap class. That was the high ropes course that we did outside. That was the belaying team for the rock climbing wall. That was Bennett's action shot.
Don't worry, he had a team of belayers to save.
That was another group of belayers. That was one of the activities we could do in our group time. That was the pellum. That was us at the rock climb. That was one of the group time groups.
Middle schoolers named middle schooler.
And that was the group through the whole school.
Is there anyone else here from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Moving on to board member comments. Is there any board members that would like to speak this evening?
As always, I just want to thank the two good students from the foundation, students for coming in and sharing with us. I think it's really important that there's a student voice. I know it's not easy, but it's really appreciated and it's good to see things through your eyes, so thanks for talking. Good job.
And the comments and the comments. Moving on to the chairman's report. I hope that everyone's had a good holiday season thus far. While at the MSMA conference in October, I attended the clinic on AI. It was facilitated by Angela Marzilli, who is the curriculum director and professional learning stakeholder at an independent nonprofit organization called Day of AI. The program was developed by MIT RAEZ. RAEZ stands for Responsible AI for Social Empowerment and Education. I am using MIT Initiative Empowering Everyone to Use AI Responsibly and With Impact. Their website, dayofai.org, has a lot of really helpful resources. It offers free hands-on AI literacy lessons, free curriculum, professional development opportunities. I just wanted to share this information because it's a very helpful resource for teachers, administrators, students. Just wanted to pass that along. And lastly, if approved, our last order of business this evening will be an executive session, which is a closed session, and we will return to open session on May 2nd. And that concludes the chairman's report. For upcoming committee and board meetings, the next SAD 44 board meeting will be held on Monday, January 12th at 6:30 p.m. here in Telstar Library. The education committee will meet Thursday, December 11th at 3:00 p.m. in the Mary St. Bay Conference Room. Facilities and personnel will meet Monday, January 12th at 5:15, room 131 here at Telstar. Finance and negotiations committee will be meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, December 9th at 5:30 p.m. at the central office. The policy committee, which typically meets on Monday, will be meeting next on Tuesday, January 6th at 10:00 a.m. here at Telstar in the back conference room. And the Region 9 Rugby Board will be meeting January 7th at 6:00 p.m. at the Region 9 School of Data Technology. And the subcommittee meetings are all scheduled up through the month of May, so if any board members or the public need any further states, please reach out to Mark and myself. I'm happy to provide those. Next, the other committee reports for the education committee. Ms. K?
The education committee met last month. The last time we met. Early November. Early November. And we looked at some NWEA data and just kind of looked at what does this mean for the district, what do the trends look like, you know, areas of concern, improvement, that sort of thing. Really just starting now that we have different graphs and portions of data to pull from Power School, starting to kind of look at more trend lines and that sort of thing. So it's going to be a continued discussion as we are able to kind of build on years' worth of data that wasn't as easy to compile as it is now with Power School, if I explain that currently.
Thank you, Stephanie. And for facilities and personnel, Mr. Campbell.
Yep, so we've met twice since our last meeting here. Couple months ago, we went over more of our descriptions and just general facility updates. We were told that there was a solar company that reached out to just see if we're interested in community solar farms and what that would be for the district. And we actually had them come in today, so we listened to their presentation today, asked some questions, asked for some follow-up, and some referrals from other municipalities or school districts that are using them. And then we'll have another discussion of that, I'm sure, in the next meeting or two.
Thank you, Brian. And for finance negotiations, Sarah.
Good evening. We met in early November, and we got an update on where we're budget year-to-date and update on some capital projects, transportation, and we started looking at when we start our budget schedule and our weekly meetings.
And for the policy committee, Ms. Verbeck.
Yes, we met on December 1st, early December. You'll see later on the agenda, there is one second reading and three first readings that are going to come up. Two were just kind of updates, the high school administration, one of us, to sort of align their practices with our policy and we looked at in a while, so.
Thank you, Stephanie. And for the Region 9 corporate, Mr. Brown.
Our November meeting was canceled. We had our meeting, December meeting was the last week. It was three agenda meetings, and they were all a technical session, so nothing I don't have any to report. In fact, as I said, we did spend the grand money, we actually spent it, it was going to run out by the end of this month, so the two buildings that are still unoccupied are fully equipped, all the welding machines are there, all the stoves and everything in the coronary offices there, so they're ready for students. This is just my opinion. I think the fire chief will end up getting exactly what he wants, 25,000 gallon system buried in the ground. I think that's the only way to get the kids in the door. They've contacted the governor's office, the office, attorney general, everyone, and they get the same thing, local control, local rules, we're not stepping on anyone's shoulders. Right now, it's all still a no-no.
I went to the Maine Municipal Association Convention in October. My wife's on the executive committee, she's like, you know, that was... So I don't know his name, I have his card, but he works at State Fire Marshal's Office. They have booze there, it's a convention, that kind of thing. And, you know, they're...they could bend the guy, the fire chief, they could bend him, the big system, and they choose not to. So, you know, that's really...just, here we go, we have leaders that don't lead. So that's just a general comment, but what you said is true, you left some things out, but I wanted to add, wanted to add. You're not trying to be deceptive, but the rest of the story is they could, they could override that.
Well, they could. Fire Marshal, way back a year ago, this whole thing started, said that he could, but he's choosing not to. But he had...he said the fire chief in Mexico had the ability to sign him, but he's choosing not to.
There's a lot there, and, you know, build something else, that's fine, we know how to build things, so, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, David. Now, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Penck with superintendent's report and correspondence.
Evening, everybody. We have a couple of appointments to announce. Firstly, Isabella Bennett, former Telstar graduate, is hired as an EdTech One at Telstar High School Special Ed Services. And Janet Barlet, who was hired as the part-time Adult Aid Clerk. No transfers. Scheduled the appointments. Telstar Middle School Roland Smith, Telstar Middle School Boys Assistant Coach for Basketball. Travis Brooks, TMS Alpine Ski Coach. Katie Cricker, TMS Nordic Ski Coach and Coordinator. Telstar High School Pete Haddon is Telstar High School Assistant Boys Basketball Coach. Timothy Coombs, Telstar High School Girls Assistant Basketball Coach. Morgan Richmond as sophomore class co-advisor, Tara Abraham. Crescent Park, we have Crystal Gould and Amanda DiUlio as Crescent Park co-basketball advisors. And we have a couple resignations. Shane Wilson, who was originally, back in our October meeting, announced as our Telstar High School Assistant Boys Basketball Coach, had to resign due to conflicts of schedule prior to the season beginning. Miranda Perry, van driver, resigned effective November 4th, 2025. And Arlen Hale, our Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, has put in her retirement announcement effective June 30th, 2026. Thank you, Arlen. That was painful, really. Ms. K, would you have any PTA updates for CPS?
Sure. We are working on...I'm catching up a little. We are working on some business sponsorships. Those have been highly successful, so I want to publicly thank all of the businesses that have contributed to that effort. It really has completely reshaped the vision for the year of our PTA, which is really exciting. We've been able to get a lot of different projects done. And also, you know, our goal is to make sure that we're not constantly just focusing on parents who are already, you know, kind of already been asked throughout the year, so involving other partners in our work has been really great. And then working on some great fall...oh, sorry, holiday things for the kids with obviously the direction of our awesome administrators over there, so things are looking good.
And we don't have a full report for what's on PTA this evening, but I know that they did their cookies with Santa on Friday night, and looking for more information as we look forward from that. It was asked, and I had this read at the last meeting, but I shared with you electronically, but just an update as our October 1 enrollment counts for the district. We have 250 students at Crescent Park, 66 at Woodstock, 158 at the middle school, 173 at the high school. This year, our economic disadvantage numbers dipped a little bit from last year, and between all four schools, we came in at 54% of our student population qualifying for economic disadvantage status. That amount, dollar amount per household and per number of people per household changes each year. It comes to us from the state, and then families respond whether they qualify or not, and it's a yes or no on the chart. That money helps towards our identification for Title I services and payment. It also qualifies us or disqualifies us for certain grants from the state and the feds. And also, that number is used when students have been helping working off as seniors and applying for scholarships and financial aid with the FASFA. That is the number that is asked or requested if they qualify or not, individual and as a school house, school. We do have 43 students currently who are registered for homeschooling, who live in our district. Some of these students have never attended our schools, and some have, and have changed to homeschooling. We have 31 students on super tennis agreements, that students from SAD who are going to other districts, and we have 34 students coming into our district on super tennis agreements. A lot of those students on both sides is primarily around parents who work in the other districts, and so they go with them to work. Coming in here, we have parents who work here and they choose to bring their kids to our district, and vice versa, they choose to take the kids in the district they work in, most likely. But for the first time, well, for the first time my view is doing this and tracking this, we have more students coming in on super tennis agreements versus going out. So just to show that. And then in your packets on the table...
What's the total, can you repeat the total of student enrollment?
250 students at Crescent Park, 66 at Woodstock, 150 at the middle school, 173 at the high school. That was as our October 1 count, and we had to...that's one report to the state, and that's where they base our state funding, and then again, we'll do it again as an April 1st enrollment update, just to check and balance.
Yeah. I appreciate these numbers, by the way, Mark. The 43 homeschool, they, essentially, distributed kindergarten to 12, or is it all below high school, or what would you...
Sometimes when we, in all honesty, we don't always know the families. We just get an email from the state saying so-and-so has...
You don't know their ages?
We don't always know the information. If they were in the district prior and then chose to switch out, then we know, but some of these families, we've never seen in schools, we don't know what grade level they are, they're at. I, based on the ones I see and know, it is younger kids versus older, but I don't have specific stats to the breakdown.
All right, and then the other question I had, thank you. Is the...so we said the parents, are they working for the school district, or they happen to just have a job in the region?
The majority work for the school district or...
Both ways, so the parent's employer is the SAD?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then in your packets, you have a colored handout, which is just a breakdown, being able to look at Power School and look at the attendance options that we have within it. One of the things that the administrative team set as a goal for this year and the next five years, essentially, is really looking at chronic absenteeism and trying to understand and really work at a goal to reduce our numbers of kids being absent and how to address that. So based on the first week of December, when I ran these reports, this just gives you a general sense of where we're at by school. Now, chronic absenteeism is something that the state tracks. Chronic absenteeism counts at any absence of school. It doesn't matter if there's excuse or unexcused, it's just simply out of school. And so all that gets summed together in their eyes. We have to track unexcused absences for truancy purposes. The chronic absenteeism rates are based on 10% of your attendance. So as of these dates, it was the 63rd day, which was December 3rd, so anything at 6.3 days or more, six days essentially and more, would count somebody as being chronically absent. And it doesn't matter the reason. So this just gives you a general sense of going into the beginning of December, where we are as a school. And also, the first page shows you the current chart, but I made a table at the bottom to show you what last year's rates were in comparison. Please keep in mind that last year's rates were the end of the year, for the whole year, so it's a work in progress. But the administrative team set a goal for themselves this year, over the next five and over five years, is to reduce our numbers by 20% in each building. And so, breaking it down, 4% a year. Doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a lot when you look at the big picture of things. The other thing to keep in mind is that some of our school populations are rather small. It doesn't take a whole lot to sway percentages, one way or the other. The good news of this report is that we are seeing an improvement so far in all the buildings, and that when you really put the numbers to it, it does make a little more sense as to what's happening. The other piece in here, these are categories created by Power School for their own accounting purposes of our attendance, so when you're looking at trending chronic, it is up to 5% attendance, and usually chronic is 5 to 9%, just under the 10% threshold. So when you look at the end of the school year, if we look at entire school year, 175 days, anything, any student who has 17 and a half or more days out of school is automatically labeled as chronic, whether they took a family vacation, they were sick, had a surgery, it doesn't matter. The one part that doesn't count, if they're on a school field trip or a school event, those count as school days, but they missed school from what is considered more than half a day, it goes into, into this kind of calculation. So just something to keep in mind, that 10% we don't make up, that's the threshold we're given, and so it kind of changes as you go on, the more days you're in, the bigger the number of kids. Last year, our numbers took...we had a severe breakout of illness at the end of January, the month of February, and our schools were hammered with attendance. It was a lot of illness went around, it wiped out kids with a lot of fever and stomach bugs. It was like four, five, six, seven days, some kids were out of the time before they got to school. So we're watching that, just to see, backing the background again. But I won't let you look at this, I don't need to read the chart to you, but it just shows you a breakdown of where we are so far through December versus the whole school year. The second page goes further, and it just breaks it down by grade level. Grade level per district versus trying to break down by building. And it does show, as the building numbers already show, that as we get older and into high school, our times, our numbers increase. But a lot of those factors come into play with our alternative schedules, with a lot of the internships kids are doing, a lot of the programs they're working on independently that factor into that a little bit. But just let you see where our numbers are at, and also shows you the numbers where, if you look at our pre-K kindergarten, we don't have that many kids, so a couple of kids hitting that threshold really change the numbers all. But just, it's just there so you can sort of see a breakdown of pre-K through grade 12, what it looks like with the December numbers. My goal is to do this again for you in March, and then again at the end of the year, just so you can sort of see if we've had the impact that they are trying to make, the efforts through communication, through trying to work with families to make sure that kids are really at school, whatever the hangups are, why they're out, and so, leave those ever to pay off.
And two questions. One, I see here, obviously, you said as the kid older, 12, is the most problematic aspect, but you said like field trips and school things didn't count, but the ELOs count toward absenteeism?
They can if they show, but if your attendance is counted, so part of tracking that attendance is a little tricky if they don't report to school.
Also, they have to come here and...
We have to rely on their employers to do their attendance, and so, trying to find a better way to get that reporting piece in there, because they all have to come to school first, they go straight to their employment place.
So in these numbers, that includes ELOs and field trips?
Sometimes. Not automatic.
Yeah. Oh, and the second one was, so how does it trend compared to the rest of the year that we're doing now? Are we...
We are slightly below average, in a good way, on the good side of that, but the chronic absentee rate for the state last year, we were below it, but it's, we're still tonight. It's not comfortable level where we're at. So it's definitely room for improvement. Last year, we finished the year... We were 23% as a district last year, being chronically absent. But then if you look at the trending, really, we're like, it's right on the bubble that as well, so our two new kids being out for that amount of days, if you're talking over 18 days, that's a lot. And some were... When you're talking over 18 days, that's a lot. And some were even more. And so that is the, the, things happen and people get sick and, you know, you're away from class. But that amount of time of class missed, and if it happens anyway, it really adds up. And it's hard to make those gaps up. And it's not just someone that's in a packet at work home to accomplish the same thing. It's a lot of mismarriage, a lot of conversations, there's a lot of fighting for each other, and there's just things you can't recreate unfortunately if you're not there. It just doesn't work that way. And then the last page of the packet, as has been requested in the past, just shows a breakdown of staff attendance data. So right now, and when it says teachers, it counts anyone ed tech or teacher and then the TA contract. We have 17 staff members who qualify as chronically absent, so that's 19% of our staff. If you take out some of that medical leave and then, in their case, attendance out, field trips do count if they're away from the classrooms, that was counted because sometimes they're not. Only some of their classes go, not the entire grade level. Some teachers, especially middle school, high school, not everyone's included. So those numbers, that's why there's two sets of numbers there, just to show the difference. For our ed techs, four are chronically absent so far, to 11%. And then in the ask me category, six are at the level of chronic absenteeism, but three of them were out due to long-term medical leaves or injuries. So those are just something we're tracking and just wanted to make sure that we're talking about the kids, but also talking about the staff, and we'll keep updating as we go through.
The term chronic, for the, for the students, it's in, that's in statute, right? It originates in the law. Is the term chronic part of the collective bargaining agreement, or is it, we're just, we're just lifting that term?
I'm just using the same, I'm just using the same categorization, just to track the purposes.
I appreciate all these numbers and we have organized them, Mark, so I want to commend you for that. And I just, but that word chronic, that's a word of art in here versus a basis in law.
I was just applying the student measurement to the staff as well, based on the conversations we've had at the board level and committees that want to see that. Any other questions? Workshop days count if they're not present. Yes. So for the, in the TA contract, they have 182 days. And so the workshop days are higher than that. Back into my question, please.
Moving on to whole business, which we do not have any thoughts in here. New business, there are any discussion items or adjustment to be addressed in the mobile. So move on to number three, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding stewarding of bid for snowfall for 2025, 2026, facilities and personnel have a recommendation.
It's a tough battle, what we're gonna recommend to approve, so what bid we got?
Do you mind escaping who the bid was? We all know, just for record. Thank you. Thank you. We do not need a second, or we have the recommendation. Is there any discussion?
What was it, right?
It's broken down per.
Oh, per hour, okay.
Per hour.
So it's not a season, it's a, it's a per hour?
Per hour, per vehicle, per service that they provide to.
And there was like 11 different sections of per hour.
It was an increase this year of $5 an hour, whereas last year was increased to $10. So it was a smaller increase than it was the previous two years.
What's that, what's that percent, Mark?
It will depend on what our bill is to know.
The highest one was like what?
The hourly, the hourly.
It goes, the highest was 185. 185 for the biggest equipment, little motor was probably about $185 an hour.
So it's five, that's bump five.
Five, everything, each, each line I run, $5.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the third person's line for 2025, 26 to cross expedition? Thank you, senior. Number four, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding the second and final reading of Policy AD Mission Statement and the Policy Committee will have recommendation. The Policy Committee recommends approval. We do not need a second, is there any discussion on this agenda? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the second and final reading of Policy AD Mission Statement? Thank you, senior. Number five, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding first reading of Policy IK-8 Creating System and the Policy Committee will have recommendation. Policy Committee recommends approval. Any discussion on this agenda, any questions?
Just for clarifying purposes in the notes, the, the change comes in the demonstration with our department about what was previously done for quality points and adding a lot of extra points for college courses and dual enrollment classes. And there was a stipulation put in for a certain level course number. And removing that course number and just having it be all dual enrollment classes or college classes kind of the same and not having to worry about the 100, 102, 105 designation from two for each course. As in, those levels are different depending on the university or college you're working with. There was also stipulation in that be a certain level of calculus. And this just put it all under one umbrella and didn't have it be as specified so that they weren't having to sit there and essentially split hairs between courses for kids and trying to understand the rigor and the level. The determination was if they're taking a college-level course in high school, but that is worth the extra bonus adds on to the total.
Great. Questions, Bones?
Is, same as we just got our past reports. Is there any way, I don't want to make so much more work, but is there any way if you are at partially meet standards that we can put it in, like, perhaps use some sort of summary to help explain, like, where, there might be a gap? Maybe not every line either, but just in like the summary of the section of what we're working through, just so like your parents can be more informed of.
Part of that might be just the fact that it's an ongoing thing throughout the year, like there are multiple attempts at it, it's hard to know specifically.
Sometimes you're just kind of filling the blanks with the other ones that aren't filling those blanks in.
Sure. We can, we can take it back to admin team and see if we can work with the teachers about comments in the comment section.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the first reading of Policy IK-8 Creating System? Thank you, senior. Number six, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding first reading of Policy HCD-A for secondary enrollment options and the Policy Committee will have recommendation. The Policy Committee recommends approval. Is there any discussion?
Do we have a number of students taking college courses? Do you have a number of them?
All right, don't over top my head right now. We only have a couple of kids doing the CM program. Does she have the full program? But our, and all of our AP classes here are dual enrollment courses, so you get college credit for that. And then we have a lot of online courses kids are taking. But I can get that from the next meeting and have it updated at the end, at least toward the end of the semester, the first semester stats are.
Any other juniors in there? Does that start doing your, being?
They can start taking classes freshman year if they want. Most do a junior senior year, but they can take the online courses. They're available once they're in high school.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the first reading of Policy HCD-A for secondary enrollment options? Senior, thank you. Number seven, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding first reading of Policy IK-8A against resident students and the Policy Committee will have recommendation.
Yes, I'm going to turn it over. Between the release of this agenda and tonight, some more discussions happened up there at committee level for questions. So we're just, I think it's best practice for us as a committee to do our due diligence on things and bring them as good as they can be to foreboard. So the Policy Committee is going to recommend tabling until we have one more meeting to discuss what came up. And then you'll see it again in January.
Records. Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions, discussion on tabling this item until the next meeting?
I appreciate you taking the time to take your.
So all of those in favor of tabling the first reading of Policy IK-8A until the January meeting? Senior, thank you. Number eight, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding increasing subpay rates due to the minimum wage increase starting June 1st, 2026, moving to $15.10 an hour. The superintendent recommends that substitute teachers slash ed techs go from 120 to 130 per day. And substitutes that are certified teachers to go from 145 to 155 per day. Do I have any motion? Motion approved? A second? Any discussion?
If this did not increase for the minimum wage percentage?
It, well, the minimum wage, no, it does not match it completely, but if, if we don't increase, then what we found is that when we increased last year for our substitute custodians and kitchen workers, that our classroom teacher substitutes were being paid less per hour.
Are we underweight the percentage of our student degrees or? So the minimum wage?
We didn't do what percentage, so I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Senior, all of those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommending increases to substitute pay rates? Senior, thank you. And number nine, to see what action the board wishes to take regarding entering into an executive session for review of the contact with superintendent of schools pursuant to Section 1, MRIS Day 4, 5, 6 Day. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion as stated in the agenda.
Any response, do you have a second? Any discussion on going into executive session? Seeing none, all of those in favor of entering into executive session to discuss the superintendent's contract? Senior, any who will take a brief recess. Thank you very much for coming.